All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's 5:30. We'll go ahead and get the meeting kicked off and I call it the order. Happy St. Patrick's Day. I found out this morning when I first came to work wearing a blue shirt that it was St. Patrick's Day because I didn't pay attention to that. So when I went home to eat lunch, I had to change and come back. So thank you all for coming here on the St. Patrick's Day. Special guest that's with us tonight, we have this Addison Lewis is here representing the Youth Leadership Program, which is a fantastic program that the Chamber has been working with students that are recognized with leadership skills. And so just to be selected was a huge step and then be participating is even more so. And because we like to embarrass people when they come to a meeting, when we get to the Pledge of Allegiance, we've asked her if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll join me, I'll kick us off with the invocation and prayer and then as soon as we finish, I'm going to have this Addison lead. By the way, thank you for this day. We thank you for just your love for our community. We thank you for all that it represents. We ask you to be with us tonight, to guide us, to direct us, to give us wisdom and discernment in each and every decision. We thank you for your protection over the weekend. We lift up all the communities that had damage, that had some serious issues, God. We're just praying for healing and for just a time for those communities to come together. We thank you again for protecting and looking over us. We thank you for all our first responders. Thank you for their service. We thank you for all that they do to keep us in a community that's safe. We thank you for our military for keeping us in a nation that's safe. We just ask you to continue to guide us, to direct us, and we love you in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So if you haven't had a chance to see our agenda tonight, there is quite a few items on it. I know that there's a long list, so we're going to kind of keep things flowing so that we can go through. As we go into the approval of our agenda, we did have a couple of amendments that are on the printed agenda that we have here, but they weren't available at the time that it was advertised, so we want to make sure that we go through those. The first item is under, item B, under the consent agenda is a first readers proclamation that came up after the agenda had been advertised. Add item zero under new business is a consideration and approval of G dot agreement for bridge replacement on State Route 136 at Talkin' Rock Creek. Add item G under action items, consideration and approval of reappointing Karen Benson and Harold Hensley to the planning commission. And then item P under new business is consideration and approval of a resolution to dispose of certain surplus right away. As we get to each item in the agenda, we'll be able to explain what those are. Those are the amendments that I have to either of you have any additional amendments?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A second. Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Then the agenda is approved and we will work our way through it. First, in the consent agenda, we had two different proclamations this month. One was the Gilton deed award. We're very fortunate to get to participate each year in presenting the Gilton deed proclamation at the Retired Educators Association. It's made up of all nonprofits this year. The Gilton deed award winner was from the Optimus Club and it was Mr. Jim Kirk. And that proclamation was completed on the 12th. So on March the 12th, get a chance to participate in that and want to make sure that goes into the record. We also had the Pickens First Readers Week proclamation. Pickens First Readers Week is the week of March 17th through March the 24th. It's a fundraising opportunity to continue to give books, free books, in the hands of all children under the age of five. For those of you that have not participated and ever donated to help support that Jalen Bell program for first readers, Ms. Ashley Gooch is one of the future arrestees. There's quite a few people that have volunteered to be the ones to put her in custody and she's been doing all she can to continue to raise the funds necessary for her bail. So if you have a chance, there's a QR code actually in the lobby. You can scan it on your way out, do it digitally, or I'm sure she'd stand there and take a check or cash or there's no telling how she would. But she is participating in that program this year and doing all she can to help raise money for a good cause. So that proclamation was completed on the 14th of March. I want to make sure both of those are in the record that they have occurred. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. We'll open up a public hearing. It's a request for change in land use classification. Anytime there's a down zone going from residential to agricultural, it qualifies as a down zone. So the public hearing is actually completed here before us as the board commissioners. Ms. Ashley Gooch is going to present that information and then we'll open up for comments when she completes. So four years.
So tonight we have ARZI 190902. It's Mr. Sherry Copeland on behalf of Gary Copeland. His property is located at Cove Road. The request is to go from rural residential to agriculture on 7.86, give or take acres. That parcel number is 045074. The intent of the request is to take that piece. It's divided by a creek, split it, and then give it to the two adjoining ag parcels. So you can see right away how that looks like it's going to be the ones that are directly south of the star. So again, it'll kind of split it in half and give one to each of them. So they're both larger ag lots than they currently are. This is in a rural residential character area, which is consistent. It promotes the larger land use districts. And then the recommendation is that staff recommends a approval of the down zoning request from rural residential to agriculture for parcel 045074. This is based on the alignment with the agricultural land use objectives, compatibility with surrounding properties, minimal impact on infrastructure, and the condition that the 7.86 acre parcel be combined with the two adjoining parcels.
Any questions? So is Shear, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not that.
I thought I saw you coming in. I just couldn't figure what you said.
Sorry. No, that's pretty much sums it up. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks. It is a public hearing, so anytime we do have a public hearing, there is the opportunity for any public comments. We do ask the equal time to be provided for both the for and against. So if there's anyone that's here to speak for, we'll go with that first. If there are any additional comments for, if there are any comments against. This is a simple public hearing. The public doesn't have anything to say. So what we'll do is we'll close the public hearing portion. We do have it on the agenda when it comes time to go through the reasons there. And that way the board has an opportunity at that point, once a motion's made, if there's any further discussion, it can be brought up at that point. But we'll bring that into the agenda further down when we get into the reasons. At this time, at 5:38, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
We'll be closed from that. Under old business, we have none, so we'll go straight into new business. The first item under new business is an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Jasper regarding certain regulations of properties owned. This is an intergovernmental agreement. It was presented at the city of Jasper on March the 4th where they did vote and approve their end of this. The agreement is essentially in the summary form, and I know that you guys were both provided with a copy so that you can review, any county owned property in the city or city owned property in the county, if there's any development that occurs in that city owned property or county owned property would then be regulated by those county standards. So if the county owns property, for instance, the building that we're in is in the city of Jasper, but it's owned by Pickens County government. If there was a construction project that was taking place here, it would be managed and regulated by Pickens County's office and then vice versa. If the city owned property outside of the city owned is in the county, then they would be the ones that would regulate any construction within their particular offices. I know this was provided to you guys to give you a chance to read over the entire contract, the entire agreement. So I'd like to open it up first for a motion for approval authorizing me as chairman to sign and enter into the agreement. And then once we have a motion seconded, then we can open it up for discussion and questions.
Make a motion to approve the idea? I'll second.
All right, with move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
No.
Great. To discuss on? With none, all in favor?
Aha.
Next item on our agenda is the consideration and approval of the emergency operations plan. When we hit our work session, I know Dr. Westbrook came and presented the emergency operations plan and provided you with a full copy of that. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it. If so, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve and authorize me as chairman to sign on behalf of the county of the statewide mutual aid emergency operations plan.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions on that? With none, all in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion carries. This one has multiple places, so I apologize. Next item on our agenda is the consideration and approval of a statewide mutual aid and Which is continued as a part of the emergency operations plan. It was in there with the emergency operations plan as it was presented with Dr. Westbrook. So with that, I hope we've had a chance to review the entire plan as it's been presented. I'd like to entertain a motion approving and authorizing me as chairman to sign that as well.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the consideration for, of a request for the abandonment of a portion of Pettit Road for a future public hearing. The resolution has been presented from council. We did receive a request from council representing a property owner, Mr. Vito Partepello, a portion of the property on Pettit Road that he owns both sides of the road. The request was that the county consider the abandonment of that portion so that those portions of property could be needed. Obviously, this is a motion that would require a future public hearing in order to consider that, but we do have a resolution based on the request so that we could then work to schedule that public hearing. This motion for the resolution tonight would be that a portion of Pettit Road that's shown in the plan that was provided to you, which is owned on both sides by the same property owner. The proceedings regarding the abandonment of the portion of Pettit Road shall be initiated. The chairman or designee shall provide notice to the county's determination to the abutting property owners and shall provide notice in the legal organ for a period of at least two weeks prior to a public hearing of the proposed abandonment of portion of Pettit Road. Therefore, then scheduling that public hearing to take place. So once we would have that. So this is just the authorization of a resolution that we will call upon the advertisement for a public hearing. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the resolution calling for a public hearing to entertain the request for abandonment of Pettit Road?
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion carries. We'll get that scheduled. Most likely, we will have that scheduled on the same day of our meeting day. So then when we have our meeting in April, we will have that same thing advertised for that as well, as long as the dates work. Next item on the agenda is a notice of a request for annexation of parcel 064007 to the city of Jasper. For reference, this is the old Dunn's Fina at 108 and 515. There's a portion of property directly behind that parcel was split. You had the gas station and then you had the truck parking and it was two separate parcels of property that were used as the same location. One was already annexed into the city, which was the gas station, the parking lot was not. City of Jasper has sent over the notice of a pending annexation request. I believe a copy of that was provided in your packet. They will actually have their public hearing on that on March the 25th. Law states that if there's any opposition from the county, that's, this is the time that we would have to then say whether we were going to oppose that or not. So there's really not a vote in terms of approving this request. It's just to put it out for discussion in case there was any reason for opposition. The Clipper is the station, the truck stop that has purchased that property and they're preparing to build a Clipper gas station and truck stop there in the same location. So with that, do we have any opposition that either of you would like to present?
All in favor.
Then I will notify the city that there's not any opposition to that and that they can proceed with their hearing just like they want with it. Next item on the agenda, item F, is to authorize chairman to request annexation of a parcel 041064 into the city of Jasper. 06, 041064 is actually the parcel number for the current airport. There's split into two parcels. Half of the airport is currently in the city, half is still in the county. We are in the process of working to build a terminal on the portion that's actually in the county, but we need to have sewer services provided. It's obvious when you review the maps that at one point in time it was in the city because there's, everything that it joins on the other side is still currently in the city, but that one portion was not. So what I would like to request is authorization for me as chairman to submit the application for annexation into the city and submit that over to the city of Jasper. So with that, do I have a motion authorizing me to do so?
So move. I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? No, that's kind of, almost sounds like it oversimplified, but it is a fairly simple process. It's just kind of remedying something that's kind of been in place for a while, so. All right, so I have a move in a second. All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed. We will get that application prepared and submitted. Next item on our agenda is the consideration and approval of parking lot paving bids. We did put out to bid two separate parking lot paving projects, one for the administrative building here, both the front and the back, including where we've added some additional employee parking in the gravel lots and Kirk and his team have worked really hard to prep the property. The bids were opened on February the 13th. The sealed bids were contained and opened. We had 12 that originally requested packets for the bids. We had seven submit bids. The bids ranged from 419,000 up to 631,000. That's for both the library parking lot paving and for the county admin parking. We had it reviewed by the engineers from Rochester to review, to compare, and make sure that they were all the same. Their recommendation was the actual low bidder, which was Johnson Paving LLC out of Blue Ridge with a bid of 419,827.56. I would like to present that and request approval from the board for us to move forward with engaging Johnson Paving to begin that project. Do I have a motion to do so?
Make a motion to approve. Second the motion.
Motion in a second. During the discussion, I would like to see if we can alter that motion just a little bit. This is my fault when I called on it. To also authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents to go along with that. So if I could alter that motion to include the authorization to sign all necessary documents for the engagement.
So moved.
You move the second time.
Am I supposed to?
You did it right.
Okay.
The motion now has been moved to a second.
No, 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 crap. That's okay.
I confused that one. That was my fault. So I have a move. Do you have a second on that?
Yes, okay.
So I have a move in a second. Any discussion or questions? That I won't mess that one up again. All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed. We'll get that provided back to Johnson so they can get that project slated. Next item on the agenda is the consideration and approval of the LMEG road paving bids. We have a combination of LMEG and SQUAD for road paving projects. We went out to bid and those bids came in on February the 13th as well. We had seven submit their bids on that project as well. The low bidder was Colditz Trucking for $2,106,13. They were able to submit that bid for all roads that were included within that project. I don't have the full road list right here in front of me, but I will make a statement that we're still waiting on one thing for one of these roads to be completed. Henderson Mountain Road going across Salacoa is our biggest part of this paving project and it requires the water line to be done prior to the paving to be done. We're still waiting on the EPD right now to approve because the length of the water line that has to go through there. Colditz was aware when they submitted their bid that there might be a deletion if that's necessary. If we can go ahead and get this process moving in terms of approving the bid for the total project, as long as that water line can be laid and can be a part of it, then we will. If not, we'll amend it by removing that portion of the bid and then we'll continue to move forward with paving all the other projects that were included on there as well. Hopefully that makes sense. I know that Kirk had provided an updated email a few months back as we were preparing to go out to bid and that before each of you. With that, we'll get a motion first and that way you guys can ask any additional questions that you got. Do I have a motion to approve the paving project bid with Colditz Trucking at $2,106,13 and authorize the chairman to sign any necessary documents to engage?
I'll second the mo, or I'll make the motion.
So I have a motion to say, any discussion or questions? I know that gets a little bit complicated because we are kind of waiting on another bid on another project, but we have to get the EPD to finish their paperwork first.
Henderson Mountain Farming. See Kirk.
Yeah. Kirk's got his side of it done and it's Philip on his side that's not got his side.
I'm pointing at Kirk so he can punch Philip.
Yeah. They've gone back and forth quite a bit almost.
Always a problem.
All right, so we have a move in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. We'll get all the paperwork necessary to engage them when we go on forward. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an agreement for tourism development services. This is an annual agreement that we have with the Chamber of Commerce because they serve as the tourism arm for Pickens County. That means that a portion of all hotel motel tax funds their tourism projects. This is, if you, if you want to spend time in DCA's website, you can read and understand a little bit more of the specifics, but the county is levying a 6% hotel motel tax within the jurisdiction. Its intended purpose is for tourism to be provided. The exact percentage, I'm trying to see exactly where it says it's on here. I know that you guys had it provided, so you may actually have seen this already. It's two thirds, yeah, but I thought it had listed, yeah. Two thirds of that goes to the Chamber of Commerce for providing tourism. The remaining one third goes into the general fund to be used for other projects as well. So this is an annual presentation it would make to continue that process for them to continue to serve as the tourism arm of Pickens County. With that, do I have a motion authorizing me as chairman to sign the agreement for tourism development and services between the county and Chamber of Commerce?
So moved. I'll second.
With a move in a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed? Motion carries. We'll get the agreement signed and move forward. All right, the next three items or four items are all surplus equipment items. We've got them broken down by department. There's some equipment in the water department. One is a 2002 Polaris 400 Sportsman four by four. The second item is a 2010 homemade trailer, so it does not actually have a title. What their intent is, is to get the approval of the surplus and they can list those on GovDills and do the online auction through GovDills that we've utilized in the past. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the surplusing of those two items?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed? Motion carries. The second is surplus equipment for the public works department. We do have a handful of items in the surplus equipment. Four of them, same intent is to be able to list those on GovDills. We have a set of four tire sizes, 12.4 dash 24, three of tire size 460, 85, R34, and one in tire size 380, 85, R24. All are tires that do not work for the equipment that we currently have. So I have a motion authorizing the surplus of those pieces of equipment.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Next is from the rec department and it is a motion that would include a club car carryall two plus, basically a golf cart. Never heard it referred to that way, but it's got the serial number listed there. They would like to list that on GovDills as well. So do I have a motion authorizing the approval of the club car carryall two plus?
I'll move. I need to name it again before I make a second.
Club car carryall two plus.
All right, I'll second.
I have a move in a second. Any discussion?
What was the name of that again?
All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. All right, so the next is from the fire department. We have some surplus equipment from the fire department. There's a handful of different items. One is a 1985 white Chevy Blazer. VIN number's included in your packet. 1990 red F-350 for brush truck. It has all the information for the VIN number in your packet as well. A 1988 red Chevrolet Suburban. And then the following stretchers. We have 11 striker stretchers and two bariatric striker stretchers. Those are the oversized, I guess, 13 total stretchers and then three vehicles, all to be able to be surplus so that they can move those as well. Do I have a motion authorizing the surplus of that equipment?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion?
Sounds like we got our money's worth out of those two trucks.
Yeah, they've definitely had some miles on them. There was another one listed, I think Kirk's lay claim to, to try to, try to see if he can get a few more, a few more miles out of it. So rather than clear surplus. All right, so with that, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed, motion carries. All right, so I'm going to take a break, catch my breath, and I'm going to let Miranda step up and she can go over the 2024 budget amendments that she sent in your packets and we can ask her questions.
Okay, so we are in the middle of our audit and as we are working through this, these amendments reflect a 5% above budget amount for revenues. So excess revenue over expenditures is 5%. Expenditures is 3%. So basically, these amendments are to balance out the annual activity, create better looking, cleaner looking reports. So we are, the amendments actually create an increase of $1,235,079. Again, excess revenue that we have received over our expenditures today for 2024. Any questions?
With no questions, do I have a motion to approve the amendments request from the Department of Public Health?
So moved. I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion?
Good job, Miranda.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aha.
None opposed? We'll get those signed and approved. We should have, we're targeting, they're going to be back next week for them to finish the audit over the next month or so, and then they'll be working to schedule the audit presentation at an upcoming meeting. So we should have that date locked in over the next couple of weeks and they're going to be coming and doing that presentation as well. So be on the lookout. Next is our action items on our agenda. Give it back.
Yep.
One second. I know, I'm trying to figure out why it didn't show up. But it didn't. So, okay, sorry. Give it back. I've got it way out of whack now, so.
You have a double spaced agenda for this very reason?
Well, it's, I can work, my agenda is, the working the screen behind us is what's got me thrown off. So the screen is not matching the items that we have on the physical agenda. So it didn't include those, those two additionals. So the next item on the agenda that does not show up on your screen is item O, and that's the consideration and approval of the G dot agreement for bridge replacement on State Route 136 at Talkin' Rock Creek. And I will make a comment as I've showed that the screen is not matching the written agenda. The written agenda was provided to me from the county clerk. I'm the one that made the PowerPoint using it, so you didn't mistake. We kept that from showing up on the screen, it's on me, it's not on her. I can see her coming after me now. This is a project where the Georgia Department of Transportation is going to be changing up the bridge at some point in time on Jones Mountain Road. It's on their project list, it's been let. It's on their project list. It's been let. There's a utility line replacement that we have the water lines that go through there where they have to be relocated. The project is, as I read the first number, make sure that you, you stay with me until I get to the end of it. But the total project's 296,094, out of which 258,851 is for in-kind costs. So they're not for all straight out costs that we're going to have to pay for. They're for in-kind costs. 155,000 in utility aid for in-kind costs, which Pickens County would then have 40% total, which is 103,000 of in-kind cost. And 37,000 for the betterment cost, meaning that the total amount that we would end up having, both in-kind and betterment, would be 140. Most likely it would be 37 that's going to be an actual payment that we would be responsible for in the relocation of the water lines that, that go through there. This is an agreement between us and the Georgia Department of Transportation agreeing that we will participate in that project with the 40% of the total project. And I know that the packet was submitted over to you so that you could review it. But with that, I would like to ask for a motion authorizing me as a chairman to sign the agreement between Pickens County and Georgia Department of Transportation, authorizing this project to move forward.
Submit.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Have they said how they're replacing it? Like are they going to tear up a new one and are they going to have to reroute it?
They're going to reroute the line. And then for the bridge, they're putting a temporary in while they repair the other. And then they get it back going and then they're going to put it back on that.
Same place it is.
They've already worked out an agreement with the property owner right next to it to, to put the temporary and then come back. So we'll have to relocate at the time of the temporary, but we won't have to move back. We'll be able to, I think, remain where we want to have it for temporary. So. Any other discussion or questions? And none, all in favor? Motion carries. All right. So the next item that is in our packet and in the written agenda that did not make it onto the PowerPoint is the consideration and approval of a resolution to dispose of circum surplus right away. There was a strip of land next to the Pickens County Airport between it and where Sutton, which is commonly referred to as Jasper Jeep TNT properties. And that strip of land was originally listed on the parcel as being future right away for a potential road. That road, that particular piece of property has been fixed in as part of the Jasper Jeep property now for over 20 years. It's never been actually utilized for anything other than part of their property. So the, the property owner actually paid their surveyor to come and survey out where exactly the line was that went through there. This is a resolution that would then authorize me as chairman to sign a quick claim deed that that property then become part of the TNT properties that, that are already in place. I know that the packet along with the survey was submitted for each of you guys to review. Hopefully there's no questions, but it's essentially that 50 foot strip that runs right on their side of the, the fence where it's currently occupied by TNT. So with that, do I have a motion authorizing the, well, first approving the resolution and second authorizing me as chairman to sign the quick claim necessary to execute this?
Make a motion to approve and approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? I know that we originally had this on agenda a few months ago and then there was a little bit of question as to where the line was, where the fence line was. And that's where they actually had the survey redone. With no other discussion or questions, all in favor? Motion carries. Now we will actually move on to our action items. The first item on our action item is the approval of minutes. And there were two sets of minutes that were provided that you guys have both had a chance to review. First is from our regular meeting on February the 12th, 2025. And the second set of minutes is from our work session on March the 3rd, 2025. I know each member was present on both of these, so hopefully you've had a chance to review the minutes as they've been presented. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the consideration and approval for the reappointment of Folsom Proctor and Donnie Holmes to serve on the Pickens County Board of Health. Both have continued to serve for, for quite a period of time and have done a fantastic job in that, in their capacity. Folsom Proctor is commonly referred to as Doctor Sonny Proctor, but he serves in that medical role. One of the roles on the Board of Health does require that to be a doctor that resides in our community. And Donnie Holmes has continued to serve while he works in the pharmaceutical side and, and currently serves as the chair of, I think that Proctor's actually the vice chair this year.
That's what they say.
He missed one meeting and he got picked as the, the vice chair. So both are chair and are vice chair. Their terms did expire at the end of the year. This will be a continuation of their term till December 31st, 2030. So the term is set by state law for the Board of Health. So I know you're here. Do you have any comment? I didn't really ask for your permission to reappoint you, so I figured I probably ought to give you a chance to say.
Permission granted, sir. The, again, 21 years.
21.
Andrew Jackson served before me.
Thank you, thank you. With that, do I have a motion for the reappointment of Mr. Don Holmes and Dr. Folsom Proctor?
Continue, sir.
To move.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion?
Last chance. You can send to this treatment, sir.
All in favor? Both are reappointed. Next item is the consideration and approval of the appointment of Stephanie Ray to serve on the planning commission. We did have Mr. Kevin Ward. His term did expire at the end of the year and he'd asked that, that he not be reappointed. Here at that time, his, his work had gotten very busy. So the term would be through December the 31st, 2028. Stephanie's been a lifelong resident and business owner in Pickens County. So I would like to entertain a motion appointing Stephanie Ray to the planning commission for a term through December 31st, 2028.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? None, all in favor? Motion carries. Stephanie here. I didn't see her come in. Okay. Next item is a resolution to appoint another member to a planning commission. We have Mr. Jason Mayfield serving on the planning commission. Jason was recently appointed as an associate magistrate judge, part-time associate magistrate judge. And in that capacity, he cannot serve in another, another role on a board where any, any payment is, is received. And it's not much of a payment. It's a very insignificant, but it's established in the ordinance to do as a payment that's there. So he had to step down. So I would like to ask for your consideration of Mr. Wade Brown to continue to serve through the remainder of that term, which runs through December the 31st, 2026, as a member of the planning commission. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Appreciate you, Larry.
I was trying to hurry up and get a vote before he says he doesn't want it.
I didn't ask him. I just said thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries. Now you stop. We appreciate it very much. Next item on our agenda is the consideration and approval of the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Tomlin to serve on the beer and wine board. We have Mr. Toby Jones that recently stepped down from the beer and wine board. And Mr. Jeffrey Tomlin has expressed an interest in, in serving in that capacity. There is not a set expiration the same as there are on the others as the way that board was established. So it's, it would be until, until either he chose to, to step down or if the beer and wine board rules were changed at that point in time. So I'd like to entertain a motion for the appointment of Mr. Tomlin to serve on the beer and wine board.
Submit second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed. Motion carries. I've seen here, but thank you very much for your service and your willingness to serve. Another one that we've not gave a chance to really say no to is the consideration and approval of the reappointment of Sloan L. Rudd to serve on the Northwest Georgia Region One Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. His term will be coming up for expiration in just a couple of months. And so this reappointment would be for another three-year term that would end on June the 30th, 2028. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Sloan L. Rudd to serve in that capacity.
Make a most fervent motion to approve.
I'll second that guess.
With move in a second. Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? None opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations, sir. The next is the reappointment of Ms. Karen Benson and Harold Hensley to the planning commission. Both their terms just recently expired, but they have both expressed a willingness to continue to serve. So I would like to entertain a motion that we reappoint Harold Hensley and Karen Benson to serve on the planning commission with terms expiring on December 31st, 2028.
Submit second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Now we're to the rezones portion of our meetings. We do have a, a couple of different rezones to go through under action items. First rezon is a conditional use 190879. The application is from Mr. Richard Paulson, 131 Revist Road for a 14.3 acre located in parcel 067D 090002 for equestrian facility event space. The application was received on November the 26th requesting the conditional use. The intended purpose of the permanent request, if approved, was to allow for an upgrade to existing equestrian facility to include activities for local 4H program in Pickens County High School rodeo. It would also open the utility building on the property to hold events such as weddings, family reunions and parties. The public hearing was conducted on February the 10th where the planning commission made a recommendation with conditions. Four yes, zero no for approval. The conditions that they included were in addition to permitting requirements of the, of the zoning and building codes, the fire marshal will work closely with the owner in compliance, including confirming that access and safety requirements are met. And that they would work with the planning and developments staff to ensure that the vehicles will not exceed capacity or threshold on the property. So that's the motion that came before. So I'd like to open up the floor for any recommendations or for the motion that you would like to make.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use modification request to expand the existing equestrian operation as an events venue. The venue will accommodate family reunions, birthday parties and similar events except weddings. Additionally, it will include a designated area for 4H activities and facility for rodeo events in partnerships with Pickens High School with the following conditions. Addition to permit, addition to permitting requirements to the zoning and building codes, the fire marshal will work closely with the owner for compliance, including confirming that access and safety requirements are met. Number two, work with the planning development staff to ensure parking of all vehicles will not exceed the capacity threshold of the property. And number three, the amplified sound associated with these events will cease by 8 p.m.
You have that listed now in the motion form, so we'll make sure to record this. All right. So would you have a motion for approval with the conditions as presented in addition to exclusion, exclusion of weddings that amplified sound ceases at 8 p.m. I believe are the only two additions to it as it was presented?
Yeah.
All right. So there is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? None opposed. Motion carries with conditions. And if you'll make sure to get that to Lisa so she can entertain that in the record as it was presented. The next action item rezon is RZ 190890 for Ms. Stephanie Ray. It's a 345 Davis Road. It's to request to move a 1.5 acre portion of a 13.47 acre tract from ag to rural residential. This parcel 036047. Application was received on January the 3rd requesting the change. The intended purpose of the rezon request, if approved, was to sell the existing home and building and build a new home for the raise. A public hearing was held on the 10th of February where both the staff and the planning commission recommended approval. Planning commission recommended approval for yes, zero, no. With that, do I have a motion from the floor?
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning.
So we have a motion to accept or approve.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item is not showing up on PowerPoint, but it is from the public hearing that we did at the beginning of the meeting. The public hearing was the domzone request for the portion of property that was located at parcel 045074, that's a 7.86 acre parcel with a request to move from rural residential to agricultural. It's presented by Mr. Copeland, or Ms. Copeland on behalf of Mr. Copeland. With that, do I have a motion from the floor to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? Motion carries. All right. Next item is our guest comments portion. So we might open up the floor. Any guests that have comments, we will ask that they be limited to two minutes. We'll continue to look forward, but we'll open the floor if somebody has comments they'd like to make. With none, then I would like to entertain a motion that will go into executive session. The purpose of the executive session would be to discuss property, the disposal or lease of, of property. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
To move.
I'll second.
Move in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? With that, we will go into executive session. We will be coming back out for anyone that wants to remain. We'll come back to close the meeting out and thank everybody for being here.